Just to fight the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yep, alright, let's pray. Father, we just take a moment to pause and just reflect on the Advent season that soon the world is gonna celebrate the birth of your son, Jesus Christ, and how that was redemptive in history, and that you just didn't wanna have a relationship from afar, that you actually came down to have a personal relationship with human and mankind. So, thank you for that, thank you that the world will celebrate that. Thank you for our leaders, we certainly wanna lift up our government officials at the national and state level. You tell us in your word to pray for them, we pray for their wisdom and discernment in making decisions for the people they serve, we certainly pray that at the local level and for us as well. Help each of us to think of others first and our constituents and the people that we represent, and have, we ask for your wisdom, I guess, all that to say, and thank you that we can come to you for that. So, thank you again, in your name, amen.
Thanks, David. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No additions per se, but I did pass around kind of supplemental packages with a few, a little bit of supplemental operation or some corrections, so I mark on top of there like what actually on the agenda that pertains to. Sorry?
Great, so, if not, we'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Is there support?
Support.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion's carried. Next is the consent agenda for the December two special meetings, special, December two regular board meeting minutes, the number payables and November payroll. Is there a motion to approve the consent?
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda item as presented, the December second special board meeting minutes, December second regular board meeting minutes, November twenty-five payables, November twenty-five payroll.
Support.
We have a motion in support, is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion's carried. Public comment on agenda items. Hearing done. Josh included a training article.
He did not.
Oh, you did not?
No, you had enough reading this much.
And we'll move on to business items, ordinance four thirty-five, a public hearing for the Wolverine Power Systems franchise agreement, so we'll open our public hearing.
This is the last meeting, it's just a standard franchise agreement renewal. They've operated this for many years, the last contract was in two eighty-nine, they're looking for a thirty-year term. Basically Wolverine does have some substations and name transmission lines and such, so.
Any discussion, otherwise we'll move to close the public hearing.
There's a.
Is there anybody who wants to speak to that? If not, we'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Is there support?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next, business item one point two, ordinance four thirty-five, a second reading for the agreement. Is there a motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance four thirty-five for Wolverine Power Systems franchise agreement.
Is there support?
Support.
Any discussion? If not, Kate, you wanna call the roll?
Dave?
Uh, yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Tom?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Motion's carried. Business item one point three, clerk resignation letter. Kate, has Santa Sol's resignation letter effective December thirty-first? I think we're looking for a motion to accept that. I told her I wouldn't.
It's gonna save the same, huh? Who really wants to?
I'll make a motion to accept the clerk resignation letter with the effective date of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Is there support?
Support.
Any discussion?
Thank you for all your use of servants.
Yeah, I was gonna say that too.
If we don't accept, she's asked to stay, right? Well, of course we know, you're right. Okay, I suppose.
The thirteenth amendment, bro, give it slightly.
Alright, so all in favor of accepting the clerk's resignation, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion's carried.
Wanna add, so really the board has a window of time starting basically December thirty-first to fill the position, forty-five days. The ad has been on the website for about a week and a half, a week or so. Kinda worried to reflect what we talked about the last meeting. There's board and commission application which I created that you can link to right on that link. There's been zero inquiries so far, but, so it is out there, it is, it is open, people can submit and, you know, once we get some applicants, then I'll submit them to the board for how do they wanna have that, so.
Great. Alright, next is the item one point four for the proposed two twenty twenty-six board and planning commission meeting schedules. Anything strange in there, Josh, or is it?
Nope, it's, everything is the first and third Tuesday for the board, second Tuesday for planning commission. One is, there's several meetings throughout the year where I did note, it's a busy election year, and then also there's a couple, so like the week of spring break, I know that the entire state of Michigan has an Exodus, and then the week of MTA conference where I think people may be attending that, and I think that Tuesday is the first day of that, so. Again, we, as we get closer to the time, we can either cancel a meeting if we're doing business, or we can select an alternate date, like, you know, MTA week, we could always change it to Monday before people leave town or something, so. I don't think we need to set those, those alternate dates now, I just put an acknowledgement when they might be, so.
Okay, so, is there a motion to approve the twenty twenty-six meeting schedule for the?
I mean, what should we approve, the twenty twenty-six meeting schedule as presented?
Support. Any discussion?
Now, I appreciate when the meeting, if, if the agendas were lighter, there wasn't something, I appreciate the flexibility the boards had to cancel a meeting. Now, since they having a meeting that, for the sake of having a meeting, right? And so, we've shown that demonstration of the flexibility, but when we've had to meet and schedule additional, more than able and willing to do that, so I appreciate the board doing that.
Great. We need a vote, do you?
Nope.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion's carried. Alright, Josh, one point five, the employee COLA.
Yeah, basically based on inflation rates, we looked at different economic models. Inflation rates ranging from two point seven to three point one percent, so if we kind of pick the average of that, we can do about two point nine percent COLA for next year, so the colorful spreadsheet that I have in the packet. For the most part reflects that in about ninety-five percent rate, there's a couple like, like the Vans Orin Woods caretaker where it just kinda kept an even amount, so he ended up maybe getting like a four percent, but it's four percent, a pretty small number. And then also the meeting pay, which was adjusted significantly last year for the planning commission, the board, that's gonna stay the same, so that's not gonna be changed. It does show the elected officials on here, obviously that those were really just placeholder numbers, those get discussed in a few minutes from now, so. I guess, that, and then I did also hand out, asking for more consideration, so, you know, we have the clerical wage scale, but then we also have kind of some that serves as a deputy treasurer, which, you know, I would say is, you know, can make it case that sort of clerical plus, so, you know, what I don't wanna get into a situation is where, you know, if that individual's working some hours as deputy treasurer and some hours as general admin, I don't wanna, whoever's doing payroll next year, I don't think wants to deal with splitting, you know, two, two different pay rates in a pay period, so I did reflect on the, the supplemental page, basically what that would look like with a, a, a change in the base rate of a two dollar, basically hourly premium. So, if that, that would obviously be over above the three percent, so if there's more consideration for that as well. I did do two percent across the board because it, so you can see kind of as it goes, with the, with the step increases, it's, you know, a little more than two dollar difference further on down the, down the scale, but the base lower step one is a two dollar differential.
That makes sense, I mean, our deputy treasurer is stepping in to help at this time, but typically only steps in to do the admin, like a smaller percentage for the time, right?
Four hours of minimum, I mean, that's really.
No, actually, it's more than her deputy hour choose.
Is it, okay.
And it's, I'm okay with this increase, but I did wanna note that it's not really a hassle with payroll because they are still separated, she keeps track of her hours based on if she's doing deputy duties, and then it gets charged. We were talking in the future of not charging her time to treasurer, because whoever the deputy clerk might be, like, there's a lot of splitting here, so it might just all be admin in the future, so. Yeah, she does track it, because originally she only came on doing treasury and then added admin, so her admin hours are all year and her treasury hours are only the weeks when we're collecting taxes, so that's why sometimes the admin hours can exceed the treasury hours on a given week, so it varies.
And as far as like running a department budget, like your, your treasurer office budget, you know, in a sense, the board is out, is appropriate funds for your department budget, which now if those are shifted to the admin, it's gonna be under a different department, which might cause some amendments for next year, but I think it's still the general fund. So, it's not like your treasurer fund is on a different fund, it's just a department within a general fund, so. Just for tracking purposes, if, if, you know, the question is, how much does it cost to run the treasurer's office or run the admin office? That just needs to be accounted for, taken into consideration.
Do we have, I, I feel like there's maybe multiple motions that might need to be made, I feel like, just 'cause, I wanna clarify, we have a cost of living you want approved, we have this new pay scale and a new pay scale for a new position, do you want that all? I feel like there's separate approvals?
For the new position, that's part of the one point one four, for, that, I've got that as a separate agenda item,
Okay, okay.
That we would approve the, or, well, not we, but you guys would approve the job description and proposed wage range for that position at, at that point on the agenda.
So, we might have two motions here to separate COLA from a new steps.
Scale four, yeah, yeah, and I, one thing I'll note is, on the wage spreadsheet, you notice there's no names on it, for the most part, I focused on positions and sort of put the ranges, I didn't, didn't put names or anything like that, so.
And was this spreadsheet, we're not approving the spreadsheet, you're just demonstrating what that COLA looks like on these base scales, correct?
Yeah, yeah, yep, I mean, yes, you are approving the spreadsheet, but it's, I guess, semantics, but it's, it's, you know, that's, you're approving that, really that two point nine percent number, and then we fit that in as we go.
So, I guess the first motion is to approve the COLA of two point nine percent for calendar year twenty twenty-six, so is there a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to approve the COLA of two point nine percent for the twenty twenty-six calendar year.
Is there support?
Support. Before the work bulletin, we'll note that that was the number that was incorporated into the budget for next year as well, when we did the budget adoption back in October, September, October.
Alright, any discussion? Kate, you wanna call the roll?
Jeff?
Yeah.
Dave?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Myself, yes.
And then the second motion is to approve this new one point five proposed schedule for wages.
I'll make a.
Is that correct?
For the deputy clerk, deputy.
Yeah.
Deputy treasurer.
Treasurer, or deputy treasurer, yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the new deputy treasurer wage scale as presented in exhibit one point five, starting in twenty twenty-six.
Is there support?
Support.
Any discussion? Kate, you wanna call the roll?
Scott?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Jeff?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
One thing, I guess we didn't clarify in the motions, but the, the pay periods basically start at this one and I think in the twenty eighth of December, we start at the twenty ninth, so. Is there consensus to implement the new rates of pay beginning on that Monday, the twenty ninth or whatever, so? Giving everybody an extra three days at the new rate, so.
Do you want me to put, change that in my motion, just to keep it clean, the first pay period for twenty twenty-six?
Well, actually technically that would be, I would do just effective date with the, whatever that, that Sunday is, so.
Make it twenty ninth?
Yeah, I believe it's twenty ninth.
I think the twenty ninth is Sunday.
So, twenty eighth, I think, so, twenty, Christmas is Thursday, so Saturday is the, it is the twenty eighth, so.
So, you want me to change that to the?
Two point nine percent effective December twenty eighth?
Or when we do our next payroll?
Yeah.
When we do our next payroll, yes.
So, is there support to that?
Support.
I think, yeah, you supported it, so. Do we need to call the roll again, or is everybody in consensus?
I'm good.
I'm good.
I mean, we could go ass all over again.
Alright, I just wanted to clarify that, I was okay with that, so.
Alright, business item one point six, fire chief compensation.
Yeah, yep, and I did give out some additional sort of math or whatever on a spreadsheet here on the supplemental packet, so. You know, there's, there's a couple different camps of thought here that we can take. So, Brock did come to me, kind of, I would say, late summer, early fall, kind of, you're talking budget process things of, you know, where does his compensation lie with regard to, you know, market averages, also the demands that he's putting in. I know Brock's hours are definitely approaching a high number. Sometimes Brock doesn't like to listen to you need to work less hours, but that's just, that's just Brock. So, not that we're obligated to, to cover that, but that is something to factor in, is his performance. So, looking at some different options for his compensation, we did budget seventy thousand in the budget for next year, but I wanted the board to kind of look at some creative options, you know. There's, obviously we can make it really easy and just say, let's pay him, give him a, a, a wage increase to X, and that is what it is. Now, with that, there's some additional costs the township does face, like FICA, Medicare, Workman's Comp, and all that stuff. The issue is, you know, he's not necessarily full-time, but he's an FLSA exempt employee, he meets all the thresholds of that, so. He could make a case, and I don't think Brock would make that case, but I think that it's, it's approaching on that, that concern, we at least need to understand what that could pose for the township, you know, when does that trigger benefits and when does it not? So, kind of looked at some options, so I'm gonna walk everybody through the different scenarios, I did sort of fiscal impact of where that, where that is. So, right now, his wage is fifty-six five eleven, that's twenty twenty-five wages. I guess if we did the straight, you know, two point nine percent, that would be, you can kind of see where that would go, I didn't put that as an option, the current amount. If we looked at just scenario one, which is just bumping up to seventy thousand, obviously we could pick a number in the middle. Bump him to seventy, that's the FICA, FICA Medicare impact, that's Workman's Comp. You can see the wage comes out to, fiscal impact is about seventy-eight thousand, close to seventy-nine thousand. Scenario two is splitting the difference on the wage, just saying, okay, we'll give you the COLA plus, you know, roughly what, you know, the payment of health insurance would be, it comes to about sixty-four thousand, four fifty. That's the FICA Medicare impact, Workman's Comp. But in lieu of giving it on wages, you know, we could look at enrolling him in the MERS DC or contributing to four fifty-seven, you know, doing some deferred compensation. That lowers that fiscal impact by about twelve hundred bucks to the township, because, again, you're not paying Workman's Comp, FICA, Medicare on, on the full wages. Third option saves the most money, but I think that there's concern there. If we paid the payment of health insurance, which, right now, he's indicated that there's no plan to, to pursue township benefits, but family situations could change, you know, employment situations could change, and, you know, if something changes in a year with his, with his family, then that, you know, we can't tell him, no, we can't get the benefits, you know, so that's sort of, you know. So, there is some exposure there, if that's something to be looked at, so. Kind of taking the supplemental numbers with, with my MOU, you know, the thing is, is, you know, it's, it's, you know, how many ways do you wanna skin a cat, how do you wanna get there, you know, what is the desire of the board for where Brock should be? You know, based on the market, that would still be kind of below, you know, below where the market is, even for a point seven five employee. So, I'm asking for consideration of either at least scenarios one or two. Probably not scenario three, because the payment of health insurance issue does kind of present some concerns, so, that's sort of what I'm asking.
How many hours is the fifty-six five current wage based on?
I think it was assumed it would be around twenty, it would be about twenty, 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 twenty-four, and he's typically turning in, he's been over thirty a few times, on average cases, he's been over thirty on, per week, so.
Okay, this is a salary, so he's working an extra hour without getting extra pay?
Basically, yeah.
Okay.
Do you want us to define that, what FLSA exempt is for everyone?
Yeah, it's Fair Labor Standards, basically there's, there's certain thresholds that you have to meet for being exempt, means you basically don't get overtime, so, there's things where, you know, so part of the kind of finicky way of this is that, you know, you can't really say, if FLSA exempt employee, you can't say you have to work forty hours. Now, what you can say is, we want you generally available during normal business hours, but what are the normal business hours for a firefighter? So, there's, there's some flexibility there in where, where his hours are, you know, he'd be trained, or runs the middle of the night, there's, you know, obviously we want him to be available for, you know, time with, with, meeting with management and so forth, but, you know, that's sort of where, you know, there's sort of an executive function that, that he has, supervision function, so those things, those things are met, so that would put him in an FLSA exempt status, so.
And you're saying he's working on average around thirty hours, is that what this, what we're guessing these options are?
Probably about twenty-nine to thirty on average, so.
And is that the intent, to have him continue to work that?
I would like him less than thirty, I mean, I would like to keep him at about twenty-nine, because when you get in, based on our personnel manual, when you get into thirty to forty, there's some potential trigger points there.
Yeah, I mean, twenty-nine to thirty is the range you're talking, okay.
Now, if he goes over, when we get thirty-four, he can have, you know, there's a lookback, you know, and he works twenty-two the next week, it's, it's the averages that come into play, so. But that's sort of what we're looking at, is, you know, what, what would be fair, what would be just, fair and equitable? But I'm looking at, they kind of have different schools of thought, you know, do you put it on to wages, or do you look at doing some deferred compensation? Again, I think if you're gonna do deferred comp, we'd have to do kind of an MOU with him, so if he ever decides in the fire chief, now that he didn't wanna be chief anymore, that those things would, would, you know, those would be carried with the chief position. If he says, I wanna be a captain or whatever, then those things would have to be, you know, enrolled with those, so. Not that he's gonna do that, but that would be, it has to be well documented, so.
So, three dollars, if you're just saying he goes from twenty hours a week, which was the expectation at fifty-six five, to thirty here at eighty-four seven fifty? So, we're saying we're gonna pay him less than, but the additional hours would really be working, basically, so. And that's based on comparable positions, or what's that based on?
I mean, comparable positions, you know, like, if you look at like, you know, how a township is a full-time position, there were, I believe they just filled it around a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty-five, you know, other townships in the area that have, that had gone on to be a full-time chief, you know, they're six figures plus, so.
And that's, that's gonna be forty hours, you know, or?
Yeah, yeah, forty plus, you know, it's.
Thirty plus, yeah.
There's a reality of the plus, so.
So, at that pay rate, you're at ninety for thirty hours?
Yeah, you have to understand Brock too, though, for, you have a twenty-hour-a-week job, Brock's the kind of person that's gonna be here all the time. And if it's a forty, you know, he's just that kind of person, he's always gonna be here, so.
So, if we set that expectation at thirty, we can expect he'll be over there?
So, you know, Josh's job is to kind of raid him back, you know, so, you know, Brock, you need to take a vacation, Brock, don't be here so much.
We don't, we don't want to bring him.
If I can manually change the locks for certain period of time every week, you know, that would be.
And that's okay, I mean, it's great that he's always, he's that enthusiastic, wants to be here, but.
You know, one of the things that when we, last year, when we looked at, you have pay range for positions, it's easy to do for full-time positions, it's hard to do for that part-time, full-time, full-time, part-time fire chief, because it's, you know, kind of the, the demands that we have for it fits with Brock's, you know, second, you know, career job, whereas not everyone is going to have the same availability that Brock would have to be fire chief. And that's just, you know, you might have somebody that is a full-time firefighter for another, you know, might be a full-time fighter for Grand Rapids where they work, you know, three on, four off, and they work, so you see them a whole lot for three, four days, and then you don't see them for blocks of time, where Brock is still pretty active even when he is working, so.
Is he working another job in addition to this?
Yes, yeah, it's a consumer.
Okay.
So, he does have a schedule like that, when he's on so many hours that he's off so many hours, so you see him a lot, and then you won't see him.
Okay.
And I think he works long, I mean, he's twelve-hour shifts at, at consumers, so that's, you know, it, it might be the, you know, he's working three or four days a week, so that does free up, it's not a typical five-day work week, so. But again, that structure for, works for us, and it works for Brock, but I can't guarantee that the next chief is gonna have the same availability or, or flexibility, so.
Yeah.
I was just gonna add, one of the things that I talked with Josh, I pulled out the employee manual, and our, we define full-time as regularly scheduled to work thirty or more, thirty to forty, and it was hard to say that we're regularly scheduling Brock, for one, which I believe that makes him not eligible for benefits, that's why I struggle with option two, because when we set up MERS, we said that only, and we haven't written it in the manual yet, because we started it in last year and haven't revised the manual, but we were only offering deferred contribution plan to full-time employees. So, I struggle with an option that immediately creates an exemption or an exception to our policy, and I don't know, Ron.
I was gonna say, Mr. Goldie, what's your opinion?
Here we have a question, no, here we have a policy, and now this.
I think if we scheduled the fire chief for, say, thirty hours a week, knowing that he's gonna respond to emergencies and calls, and he's regularly exceeding thirty hours a week, for them, for us to say, well, you're not ready to schedule, but therefore you're not eligible, I don't think we could pull that off, I don't, I think if he's regularly working over thirty hours under our policy, whatever his schedule is, he's, he's eligible.
Okay.
And that's been, that, that's been kind of my concern in this is, is, you know, there's, Brock's not here to defend himself, or, you know, but we know Brock is a person, and, and, you know, I think, you know, he is not the type that's gonna sit there, whoa, God, I'm at thirty point one hours, now I'm gonna get them. And that's not his personality, that's not his moral compass, ethically, he's not gonna do that. But we as a township also have to make sure that we're protected, if we ever had an employee that did get, that did get that way and would be entitled to certain things, so that's why I just wanna make sure that we, we, we're careful in how we do this, so.
What I hear Ron saying is that he is eligible, so either we force him below that threshold, did not make him eligible, or, or I see he has to get all the benefits in the manual, which includes insurance and, and, oh, I mean, all of them, either you're eligible or you're not.
Well, employees can waive health insurance.
Yes, yes, right.
Yeah, but he would be eligible.
Right, and that's why we said scenario three, the, the exposure would be, he takes family coverage, and he has every right, we can't say that's not an option.
And again, he could take it for, he could say, I'm gonna do payment of lieu for two years, and all of a sudden, consumers could, could jack their premiums by three hundred percent, and he's like, well, now, now it's not favorable for me to stay with that, and I'll, now I wanna sign up for an open enrollment, so, that's. If he's at that status, he would have that right, so. Yeah, Brock is, is agreeable to pretty much whatever we decide, he doesn't want to, he says, I don't want this to become an issue or a political debate, or whatever, I said, I don't, you know, I don't want him to be the center of the debate either, but I said, you know, we want to make sure that what we do is, is right for Brock, but also right under the law as well.
So, what we just talked about, is, is scenario one still an option then?
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah, it's an option, so.
But that doesn't include benefits, and then he's rightfully going over, we owe it to him, because he meets the definition in front, so that's.
Yeah, Mr. Goldie's saying that.
I mean, we could, we could keep him, I mean, we could make sure that he's not exceeding that, that twenty-one-hour threshold, but that's, you know, and we can enforce that. and we can enforce that again if there's, if there's a major call or major run, I mean, that, that's, you know, he's teetering on the edge is my, my concern, so.
My concern is, I mean, he's done a great job as our new fire chief. I, I think he's done a fantastic job, so my concern is we have somebody that is, you would almost say more economical because he's willing to work at the set hours that we're giving, that we're not paying a hundred and some odd thousand dollars. So to me, you know, I don't want our, our fire chief sitting here looking like, oh, I'm concerned about doing, you know, this training or doing this because I'm, you know, they're pushing on my hours, I'm, I'm concerned about that. We're looking at this like, I don't know, we've got a, a great fire chief too. I, I think he's got some longevity here, he's, he's, he's building and training many people that I would, I would hate for us to to lose an individual at, at this kind of, at this pay rate. We're still ahead compared to if we were hiring somebody full-time at a hundred and some odd thousand dollars. That's just, I mean, I agree with Kerry. I think we, I think he's been underpaid since he started because he was, he came in just working forty hours. I mean, he just, Tom was like, I'm calling your wife.
I didn't, I didn't.
Seriously, he, yeah, yeah, because he was like, you can't, you, you just don't come in and you got to slow down, so.
But, and you kind of look in, in, in the memo I drafted too, I kind of talked about the, he's done a lot to bring the department into compliance with some things too. It's not just the hours that he was putting in or being there for call, there's some training things and things that he's, we were not in compliance. Again, we are, we will never have the, I won't say never, but we are not currently, our trajectory staffing-wise, even with new positions next year, to be at our NFA standards for our population. It gets us closer, but we still have a long ways to go and, and we have to do that incrementally. We can't just hire ten people at once because that would bankrupt us.
Well, I think he's, he's helping us, like you were saying, there's some different compliance that we needed to get buttoned up and moved forward. I think that's kind of our season for a township right now, that it's nice that somebody's ambitious that wants to do that, so. I, I will make, uh, I, I mean.
I, I guess the.
I can make an argument for the scenario three here.
Well, that, I, I think scenario three would be, um, scenario three would be giving him the COLA that was adopted and then adding in, and then, and then allowing him to be benefit eligible. Uh, and, and in the end, that's still, you know, is that kind of handcuff, you know, is that really undercutting him now if you're not, if you're only going to give him two point nine percent? And then, that's my, you understand what I'm saying, right? Like, it's.
Do you have, I'm sorry, does the township have a payment lieu of?
Yes, yeah, yeah, that number that's on there, where it's P I L H I, that's, that's the projected twenty-twenty-six payment lieu of health insurance.
And I think what if, if he took insurance where, if for family worst-case scenarios, would our cost be around?
Seventeen or eighteen.
Seventeen or eighteen thousand, so.
It's about a twelve thousand dollar difference, basically, yeah.
Yeah, so you're thinking even scenario two and then do the pay and lieu?
I, I'm not, well, I was just, I was just presenting, you know.
Right.
If, if, if we're saying that he's benefit eligible, like, you know, benefits, yes, it is a form of compensation, but I also want to make sure that, that, you know, if, if Ron's feeling that we're encroaching on that or we're maybe jumping over that line, you know, is only giving him a two point nine percent, you know, I guess giving him the things he's entitled to are really, is that really?
Is that really raised?
Is that really, yeah, yeah.
That's a benefit. I, I, I just have, we're not getting smaller, I don't think his hours are going to go down. I think it's going to be really hard to enforce that. And I still think, I think he's worth seventy thousand wages plus benefits. And that's still less than what, when we're going to get to the forty-plus, when we're going to get to Zeon City's, you know, Tibbetts was at, you know, six figures and he just went to Holland Township for one twenty, Blenheim is smaller than us, they are six figures fire chief. So I just don't see us, when we get to that next step, we're still another thirty, thirty-five, forty thousand less than what it costs to have a full-time fire chief, so. And I think there's no dispute over his qualifications, his excellence. He leads by example, which is why he's at almost every call that he can make. Um, I, I just can't say enough good things about him. I, I'm, I think he's been, you know, what Ron is saying, we're not going to, I think it'd be very hard, either, we don't want people being dishonest about their hours or not writing things down. So then you, it is what it is and also we're going to go, well, now he's eligible for benefits. It's, it's kind of either you are or you aren't.
What I don't want to be in a situation for this township is where, you know, Brock stays home on a call because that, that, answering that one call might put him, whereas if we, even if he's running, you know, twenty-eight and a half hours now, he might be just a couple of, underneath that threshold. If we're okay saying, yep, full-time, his only concern is he's going to say, well, if you make me full-time, are you going to make sure that I work forty hours? And he's, he still needs that flexibility to retain his full-time job. I said, really, a firefighter doesn't, is not open eight to five, I mean, they're, so you've got a pretty big window of time to get your hours in, in some manner. So I think, I just don't want to put the position for the township where we're worried where he's going to, you know, they're not going this one Brock because, you know, you're going to, that's going to put you over the threshold, that's just going to cost us money, whereas if we just commit to it now, from a management standpoint, it makes it a whole lot easier on everybody.
Well, and it's thirty, we're not setting forty, and we're not, we wouldn't set a salary according to forty, we're still setting it at that thirty. And so it's thirty-one or thirty-two and it goes up and down, but I also feel like he's eligible for PTO. So where he does need time off, he's eligible, you, you get everything. Um, I don't, I, I don't like doing one thing for one employee because we've read a memo about it and I think we can get in trouble with that. Like, I don't, either you are eligible and you get, we're going to hire another thirty-two to thirty-six plus person when we get to item one point one four. They're going to get the whole thing that's in the manual, so like, he's no different. It's just that he's on the thirty and somebody might be at thirty-two and somebody might be at thirty-six and Josh is at forty. So we've written it as a range and, so, and, and likely the, the contribution to retirement is based as a percentage of wage, so then that's proportionate. Um, does vacation get prorated for less than forty? With PTO levels?
Yeah, yeah, so like a thirty, yeah, it would be, and, and, and the hard time, the hard part for Brock is, like, he gets sick leave with us to now. It's, when is he ever going to be sick leave because it, it's, right now, because his schedule's all over the board with things, it's like, if he's sick today, he just doesn't come in. I mean, it's, you know, I guess if he had a long-term sick issue, then the sick leave would come into play, but instead of vacation, so I, you know, again, I would say, maybe we recognize his service and say, okay, this is what your PTO is and, and so if there's a week where you only work fifteen hours because you're going on a trip wherever, then that, that would come against your, you'd use that for PTO, so.
I think it's all, I think it's all work, workable.
Yeah, so.
So we're.
We're applying and we're here, yeah.
Well, I could appreciate the work that Brock has done and sometimes we put a personality in a position and then we try to make decisions based upon the personality that we have in the position versus just trying to strategically take a look at the position. I think as a board, I think a couple of things that should drive our decision-making, one of those should be, we, I feel like we should be competitive with wages and benefits with contingent geographic townships around us, right? I don't need to worry about Detroit or whatever because that person isn't woven.
Right.
They're just going to look right around the area and we've got to be competitive with what those are. I think that should be like a foundational, you, you know, whatever. Number, uh, two, so I hope, I mean, from what Melissa said, if, if other fire chiefs in our contiguous touching geographic are making more, this is probably underpaid.
Yeah.
Then maybe we need to look at, I don't know.
You know, if, if we're proposing the seventy plus, I think it's a big jump, but it, it's, you know, again, probably underhoused it now and we don't, we don't have to try to make, you know, it's hard to make that big jump and, and, you know, fix it right or wrong in one year, but I think it's part of the process of like.
It's, everything's a journey and a process long-term, but, and number two, if we're at thirty hours and we actually feel like, at what point does the trigger threshold become forty hours? A typical full-time, and, and I don't know, I mean, at some point, with the growing number of calls and the expansion of our services in the township, at some point, we're going to reach a threshold like, you know what, this person, this is a forty-hour position. And, and we have to be prepared to say, well, if he's making this compensation at thirty, to jump to forty, that's a third increase. That's not just, I mean, we think ten hours, but no, you know, ten hours of thirty hours is a third of what he's making. That's going to be a big jump, right? I mean, so you got to kind of, to me, you got to begin with the end in mind. What do we want to pay a full-time fire chief and what does that look like? So that we're competitive in the area, work your way backwards to thirty and maybe it's a two or three-year process. I, I don't know, but I just don't know, I mean.
Well, no, we participated in a survey, uh, income survey, and I know that Josh has that, um, that shows like the different fire chiefs and such. And it is, I, I agree a hundred percent on everything that you're saying there because we don't need our neighboring township going, hey, you're underpaid X amount. I mean, the world's expensive right now. It's going to cost us more to replace him.
Well, how our township just scooped up City of Zeon's chief, so now there's an opening in the City of Zeon, so, I mean.
Yeah.
We don't need that, just saying, people are. Whether it was Brock or somebody else, we don't need our fire chief leaving when you're talking about personality and keeping that aside.
So it sounds like we've got a scenario that could work with full benefits, but what about the other side on scenario one? What if you said, okay, we're going to, we're going to base your hours at twenty-eight, we're going to pay you seventy, seventy-five, whatever the market should be? Because he doesn't need the benefits now, right? He's got another job that's got benefits. So to him, he's, he, you know, it's, it's not like it's a hardship to him to not have benefits and get a little more money in his paycheck. Does that give us more flexibility in the future, you know, when things change, because we're not locked into, to benefits? And that way, since it's not regularly scheduled more than thirty or forty hours, if he has to flex to do a call or whatever, then could he flex maybe down a little bit the next week or something? I don't know if that's an option.
Well, then, you just.
It is, I mean, that's, that's, you know, we certainly could, could say that, I just, I think that he's right, teetering on that edge. I, I guess the question is, is, you know, I, I'm, I'm just reluctant to, yeah, it'd be way easier, as I said, Brock don't see twenty-two hours a, a week and, and that's what you're paying. It's, it's just, our township is not, and our call line has gone up so significantly this year, it's just not. I don't think, we're not on a downward trajectory and that's, that's the, that's the thing. So, you know, I think that could, could scenario one work fine with no benefits today? Yeah, but I think this time next year, we're going to have to have the exact same conversation.
Yeah, but is that a problem?
If you look at.
What you're saying makes sense, we got to look at the future, but I think we also got to look at, you know, the current situation with Brock and what's best for him, what's best for the township.
So if I look at, just looking at the Sire survey that Township did, um, you know, this was, numbers are generated February to last year, they did the survey, they posted the survey in March. Um, and, and, you know, there's several comparable townships included in this and the, uh, the, the, the mean minimum of, of the pay ranges is eighty-four, six thirty-five. So that's the, that's the, that's the mean minimum for forty-hour.
That's the quick math I was doing earlier, it seems like we're still a bit low.
So, yeah, we're still, and that's, you know, so the mean minimum is eighty-four, plus it's assumed that those positions are, are benefit eligible as well. So I guess, and it's really the choosing the board and, and, you know, what I will tell you is Brock has said, he's, he's very happy here and, and if he got nothing, he would, it's not going to change his decision to work here. But again, I, I, we, we can't take that for granted either like that.
That's not a habit, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
So what I'm hearing, I just want to confirm the whole HR, when you're talking about the debates on whether he's eligible or not. If we're saying he, we, we need to step up his compensation to be more competitive here regionally. If we would so choose the, the scenario one of the seventy thousand, like, it sounds to me, tell me if I'm wrong interpreting this, but we would also should be doing retirement and pay and lieu?
Yes. He's meeting the eligibility criteria for those two things, then we're at risk to not provide him with those things.
Again, if you had an employee that was, was not getting what they're legally entitled to, that employee, and, and Ron would, would probably validate that, our defensibility as an organization is, is significantly damaged if, if, if that employee were to ever pursue that in, in, in a legal case. Brock has never threatened that, I don't see Brock being that type of person ever, but it doesn't mean that there couldn't ever be that employee that could do that.
Right. Or, or that we, we just shouldn't, I'm, I advise, we should not be in that position.
Yeah.
Because you never know what might happen. Uh, he may have a debilitating injury at some point, uh, and where we haven't been funding his retirement benefits and, uh, money becomes critical, critically important and, um, and he's not the one making the calls anymore, maybe.
Yeah, like his health, his insurance or something is the one that's coming after us for that.
I mean, nothing, obviously, nothing we want and, and unlikely to happen, we, but we just shouldn't put ourselves in that position.
Sounds like I'm hearing a scenario four.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking too.
I wrote it all three, no.
I wrote it on my paper.
So, so I think there's really, there's, 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 I think, two decisions, it, it could be one motion potentially, but I think it's, it's, one, determine benefit eligible or not, and I think we're, we're making a hard case to say no to that. And then two, determine what that wage figure should be. Does he get just the COLA or does he get seventy or does he get sixty-five or seventy-one, you know? What is a fair and equitable number there, knowing that the market would dictate even higher than that, but, you know, we don't necessarily have to get there in one year, but I think we need to at least acknowledge that, that we may have some subsequent steps in, in future years to, to take with his wage.
I'm just going to reiterate, we have, I don't think the reports in the pack had fund balance, but if, I'm not going for memory, so forget me if I'm off by a little bit, but I feel like our fund balance and the work, the fire compensation fund was about a half a million dollars in reserve. Unless we ever run a deficit, that's going to sit there and it's not a fund where we're, we're only operating expenses, unlike, so there's no capital project that's ever going to eat into that fund balance. So when we, Josh did that projection during budget, I was like, run some different scenarios when it was like, do we need one full-time firefighter? Do we need two full-time firefighters? When does, when do we hit that full-time? And as far as we can tell, um, I don't think the government has still said whether the, what the safer grants, now that the government's back open.
They are home.
What was that?
Said they are home now, but they still didn't say anything.
Correct, so we haven't heard that we're getting any grant funding, so we may or may not do two full-time fire. And I feel like, and Josh didn't want to just fill them for the sake of them being in the budget. I'm in favor of getting this right with Brock and then if we do the one full-time firefighter, we're, we, we still won't touch that fund balance. I mean, I feel like we, there's money there that we levied specifically for fire, fire compensation that we just haven't been using.
At one point, we, we're negative, but.
Correct, right, and that's why.
We could go negative again, but that's probably a number of years away.
Right, right, yeah, we showed that the mileage is short, then we increased the mileage, we've been letting the full amount, we've created this fund balance, but until we actually add enough staffing, um, and now I don't have those project, I didn't, Josh had those projections, but we were looking at two full-time right away and pushing off the full-time. And I feel like one of your scenarios did have an increase with Brock.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, I feel like we, because you put it in the budget. So we were still okay with the seventy thousand for next year's budget and two full-time with no safer grant money coming in, and we were still okay.
And we were, in, in that projection, I didn't bring that with me down the stairs, obviously, today, but, uh, with that projection, it was like, um, you know, I did like a six or seven-year projection and it was like, I was very conservative in my, like, you know, increases in, you know, I did like a four percent increase, whereas we've seen eight, nine percent with growth and, and, like, we've seen eight, nine percent, I did it at four percent, which is pretty conservative. I also did a pretty high number of, you know, for employee benefits and things like that increasing. Again, we also, I, when I did that budget projection, I assumed that every employee would be getting a family plan, whereas that's not always the case. You get people of different seasons of life, for budget purposes, you always have to assume that everyone's going to be on family plan if you, you know, I once worked in a community where I had a council member say in public, we just need to make sure we hire all single people, like, just don't ever say that again. But, you know, so we, we can't, you know, again, so we have to assume that and if, it's, it's something different than sure, so.
Uh, would the board consider, given that Josh, it's tough to make everything right tonight because I'm not sure the connection of wages and benefits and how it could impact other potential employees? And it's a big jump already from what he currently makes to what we're even suggesting to try to fully do it in one bite at the apple, feels a little significant. Could we consider a motion to consider one of these three scenarios with an action in twenty-twenty-six that the personnel committee would do a more comprehensive review of the wages and benefits of the fire chief to come back for another recommendation? in the, in twenty-six, or something like that? That way, we're trying to make it right, we're trying to become competitive, we're thinking of the future, we're, to me, it's tough to try to s- say, well, let's add insurance and this and that, and I'm like, man, I don't know how all this works, somebody, let's pause, let's reevaluate it, and then we could always come back to the board at a later time, and if we make a motion that it's like, hey, we haven't forgotten about it, we're just not prepared to, cause there might be a connection that it might impact, uh, another employer, so I, I just don't know.
So what? What I kinda heard is, he's benefit eligible, so he's, he's entitled to retirement, he's entitled to P I L A I H I. So the question would be, he, if he gets a COLA, he would be at fifty-eight, do we bump him to sixty-four, four fifty this year? And bump him up again next year, or do we go to seventy already this year? You know, with a smaller increase in another year, I mean, to me, that's the question. I, I don't think the, the benefits piece is a question anymore, that is going to be provided.
That's in the manual, it's all laid out, there's no, that doesn't impact.
The question would be, do, do we feel a two point eight percent COLA increase like everybody else, or do we wanna give him some additional this year? That, and what is that?
Sounds like we got some catching up to do with the hours he's working, so.
Yeah, so do you do all the way to seventy this year, do you go partway?
The numbers you talked about, Josh, were those just wages, or was that like a, a fully burdened compensation?
The, in that spreadsheet there, or?
No, what you were saying for the surrounding areas.
Those were just wages, it did not, it, it, there's another part of the study that breaks down benefits, but that was just the weight, that was the wages, so.
No retirement, no pay-in lieu, no anything, we are low.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and we've been historically low, I mean, it's, it's forever, you know, and, and, and when you're historically low, it, it's, it, it's hard to, it's hard to catch it all up in one year, I mean, it's, it's, but there's a shift that's in the wrong direction, you know, what, what rights that ship, and then what steps do we take to make sure that ship stays on course in future years? And I think, I think for tonight, looking at what, what, what the decision is now, but I think with some direction from the board in subsequent years to come back with, with a, a better plan in a few, few years, or, or we say it's fine the way it is and just hold it from here on out, but I think there should be some mechanism for some merit and, and something over and above just standard COLA for, for Brock moving forward.
Man, I, I would be in favor of, you know, if it's, we save the township a few bucks and spend this over several years to catch him up, or we keep Brock happy and don't give him a reason to look elsewhere and do it sooner versus later, I would vote for that. It sounds like he's doing a great job, it's gonna be hard to find someone to do a better job than him, and he's been underpaid for a while.
So, I mean, it, it's hard to make up, it's hard to make up, you know, it's hard to do retroactive makeup, you know, right around completely, but I think the fact that knowing that it has been undercompensated does need a factor into a decision-making, decision at some level.
Yeah, I don't think we'd be able to go back and catch up all of the hours he hasn't been paid for before, but I think going forward, if we can get him somewhere close to competitive, I'd support that.
With, with having, like, Moses saying that we have the compensation, the fire compensation fund available to pay for this, I think I'll throw this out there, make a motion for the seventy thousand with the full benefits, support.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor for a base pay of seventy thousand dollars for the fire chief with, uh, benefits, which would include the retirement.
Pay-in lieu.
Yeah, pay-in lieu. For you guys to vote just after that, so I looked at the, um, fire compensation fund projection, I added in, if, if the budget limits gets approved tonight, we're going to net around two hundred and forty thousand this year, so that's just a good idea where, so that's sort of forty thousand we added to fund balance, so.
So it might be at seven hundred thousand.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
So.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, is there any other discussion?
We s- we said full benefits, so is PTO prorated, and if he should, I mean, you mentioned pay-in lieu, but if he should need insurance, he is allowed the whole insurance benefit, okay, I just wanna clarify, he's.
He's eligible for benefits.
Yes.
So, and then.
With regard to PTO, um, eligibility, um, I would request that the board consider his anniversary, his, his years of service as per his anniversary date when he became, you know, the two years only he became chief, so he would, it would be viewed as if he's in year three of his, so he'd be at two weeks vacation instead of one week, is what that does, so.
Would you like me to amend my motion?
Sure, and then make the effect, say the effective date too.
Of December twenty-eighth, okay, so, effective date, December twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, for the increase, and it'll be.
I was the one that made the motion.
Did you?
You said, Melissa.
Yeah, so I'll amend my motion to start December twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, for the fire chief wage to be seventy thousand with full benefits for the retirement and the pay-in lieu with his start date for the.
PTO accrual, or however you wanna call it, eligibility based upon his initial hire day as chief.
Yes, based upon his initial hire day as chief.
Does that make sense to everybody?
I still support.
I still support.
Yep.
All right, any discussion? Okay, Kate, you wanna call the roll, or you can finish the motion first.
That was a long one, sorry.
Um, I thought, yes, Jeff?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Kerry?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.